We got a pass, I only have twenty-three percent.
I think I hear breathing, or I'm breathing. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, okay. We have new microphones and we're still in the process of adjusting them and getting everything tied together, so I'll do, we'll do our best to speak into them. If you don't hear us, please put your hand up or something like that and advise. Sound better? Well, we'll keep working on it and they'll be perfect at some point. Okay, all right, so, thanks, John. The City Council welcomes you to its meetings which are scheduled at the seventh and seven PM on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. Your interest is encouraged and truly appreciated. This meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel Seventeen, and this meeting is being recorded by NCTV and is scheduled for rebroadcast on Channel Seventeen. Please consult NCTV program listings as to schedule at www.NevadaCountyTV.org. In addition to being broadcast live on TV, it is also being broadcast live on the Internet at www.CityOfGrassValley website. Click on the button Meetings on video, City Council. Council chambers are wheelchair accessible and listening devices are available. Other special accommodations may be requested to the city clerk seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting. Action may be taken on any agenda item. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. Agenda materials are available at City Hall, the Grass Valley Public Library, or the city's website by clicking on each PDF icon. Staff reports and background information related to regular agenda items are available at City of Grass Valley City Hall. Materials related to items on this agenda submitted to the council after distribution of the agenda packet are available for public inspection in the city clerk's office at City Hall during normal business hours. Such documents are also available on City of Grass Valley's website at www.CityOfGrassValley.com, subject to the city staff's ability to post the documents before the meeting. We are calling the meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, Ralph, would you be willing to lead us in the pledge? Did I do that to you last time? Okay, roll call, Kristy.
Member Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Here.
Five members present tonight.
Fabulous. Okay, agenda approval, the City Council reserves the right to hear items in a different order in order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. And are there any changes by staff to the order?
No changes by staff.
Okay, thank you. We did not have a closed door, so there is nothing to report out. We do have a proclamation, and it's the Grand Jury Awareness Month, February twenty-eighteen. The Grand Jury Awareness Month. Who is here for that? Are you violating the Grand Jury Brown Act? You guys want to come down here and we'll do this? You have pictures and stuff? Do you have a, is your mayor a professional photographer? How are you doing?
Just fine.
Thanks for your.
This is Dawn.
Yeah, we met, yeah, somewhere.
Hello.
Hi.
Judith.
I'm torn to secrecy.
And John.
I have no idea what it is.
Or after you.
I don't remember what I signed, but I signed something. Every, every one of these things just, to me, has a very poignant part of it. My wife was the first female grand jury foreman in Nevada County, I think. And she was the first carryover grand jury foreman as well. Under Superior Court Judge Francis, so. Yeah, so it's a big deal. It was a big deal. They didn't let me know anything, though, so let me take advantage and read this proclamation. Grand Jury Awareness Month, February twenty-eighteenth. Whereas grand juries are crucial components of California's justice system, and whereas grand juries have been in existence since the adoption of California's original constitution in eighteen forty-nine, eighteen fifty, which we all remember, and whereas grand juries are impaneled to act as an arm of the court as authorized by the state constitution to be a voice of the people and a conscience of the community, and whereas, like other California counties, Nevada County has a grand jury composed of individuals who dedicate their time for a full calendar year to serve in the grand jury system, and whereas the primary duties of the Nevada County Grand Jury are to investigate and report on local government operations to assure that the responsibilities are being fulfilled efficiently, honestly, in the best interest of the public. And whereas grand juries serve as a watchdog authority and are well-suited to the effective investigation of local government because they are independent bodies operationally separate from the entities of officials they investigate, and whereas it is appropriate to provide a designated opportunity to recognize the efforts of those who have volunteered and are volunteering their time and service to advance the work of the Nevada County Grand Jury, and whereas the reward of being nineteen grand jurors is a satisfaction received working with fellow residents of the county to improve local government for all of us. Therefore, be it resolved that the Grass Valley City Council does hereby proclaim the month of February twenty-eighteen as Grand Jury Awareness Month. And there are always opportunities for people to serve, and I bet many of you have served more than one grand jury term. And we appreciate your time. And, you know, let us know if you need us or you have any questions about what we're doing in government. That's what we're here for.
Thank you, Howard.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Anybody would like to make a comment? Advertise, advertise, advertise.
Well, yeah, it's Grand Jury Month and we're recruiting, so I would encourage anyone that's interested to go online. You go to grandjuries@nccourt, no S, court.net, and the application's right there and it goes directly to the grand jury. And it's a very satisfying experience and a great community service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, thanks for coming. It's one place nobody else will find you, is if you're at the grand jury doing testimony, yeah.
Not true, not true.
It's like going to the dentist, yeah. Okay. Well, I like going to the dentist, yeah. Nobody, I can't use my cellphone there. There is a public comment. There is a time limitation of three minutes per person for any items that are not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction or interest of the city. Please come to the podium at this time and speak into the microphone. If you wish to speak regarding a scheduled agenda item, please come to the podium when the item number of the subject matter are announced and speak into the microphone when recognized. Please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to submit written information at the meeting needs to furnish ten copies to the city clerk in advance to allow for distribution to the city council, staff, and the media. Is there anybody here for public comment?
Bob Branstrom from Grass Valley. I just want to thank the city for installing a hearing loop as part of your new sound system. This is a headset that anyone here can get from Kristy here to pick up the signal that's being sent, and you can hear Howard loud and clear, and I'm sure everybody else.
Am I too loud?
No, 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 I, this has a volume adjustment.
You just turned me off?
Uh-oh, it's Howard. But the T-coil also, or a T-coil is in most hearing aids, so if you have a hearing aid, you can go to your audiologist and turn it on, and then you automatically will pick up the signal when you're in here. And it's an amazing technology, so I'm really delighted the city's gone that way. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. We're trying to update.
Mayor Levine and City Council, Ed Thomas, Morgan Ranch Drive. One of the great privileges we have in this country is freedom of speech. And I just wanted to say, I think that there are some people that come to these meetings that take advantage of that by pulling items off the consent agenda and not always making necessarily helpful, creative remarks. I appreciate very much, at the last council meeting, that you consolidated those efforts into one speaking event. I'm one person that doesn't appreciate all the interruptions in what I consider actually harassment. Thank you very much.
Matthew Coulter, Henderson Street. I believe Ed's talking about me. He spoke to me before the meeting and said that, basically what he just said. The rubber stamping that takes place at these meetings, and maybe he considers that comment to be off-key. I don't, and I have a right to speak, so I'll say it, okay? But tonight I wanted to mention the runoff of toxic waste from the city's yards. The yard at Hennessy, the paints are dumped and cleaned directly into South Fork Wolf Creek, as well as round-up containers. And I'm curious about the sodium hydroxide ten-thousand-gallon tanks and where those are going to be cleaned out to and dumped, being that we're dumping those other things directly into the water supply. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Levine and council members. My name is Yama. I am from Crystal Massage located in the Glenbrook Shopping Center next to CVS Pharmacy. I would like to introduce to you the owner of the business, David Wong. He is immigrant from China, whose English is not good, so I'm speaking on his behalf. We are hard-working people trying to earn an honest living by giving our customers a complimentary massage. We have attended hearings about the massage. Our ordinance and met with the police chief and his staff to discuss our concerns. Due to the new ordinance, we have seen a twenty to twenty-five percent decrease in business. We believe this is unfair and would like the chance to discuss this with you and on a giant dozen item, item. While we open at ten AM, as you can understand, most of our business comes in the night afternoon and evening hours to all common day working people. Under your ordinance, we are unable to accept one-hour massage customers after six PM. This has greatly affected our ability to make a living as most working people get off work at five or six PM and can't get a massage due to these strict regulations. We have had to turn away hundreds of customers due to this unfair law. We believe that a compromise could be reached that would satisfy the police and our business. Please object as this matters soon as it is hurting us. Thank you.
Good evening, mayors and council members and everybody. I'm the owner of Spring Massage Spa, which is located in 101 Bank Street, Grass Valley. My, my name is Peng Rui Liu. My purpose for being here this evening is, is to discuss the city ordinance that limits, limits us the most important business hours. The current enforced ordinance shortens over late and most productive business hours. These most productive business hours being between six, six PM to nine PM. The audience requests us, requests us, requests our business to close at seven. That means we can only accept the last customer before six for one hour-long massage. Because of that, more than one-third, one-third of our business was lost from seven PM to nine PM. Because most of people don't come over business for massage in the morning hours. The evening hours after six is over productive hours. So my customer have been turned away in their most convenient hours and not satisfied with these changes. These people come to my business after work and/or after dinner, which is after seven. I don't understand the reason or purpose for the registration, regist, uh, regist, regist, uh, sorry, registration for shortening our business hours, and I promise we'd absolutely never offer over customer sexual service. Therefore, I respectfully request to extend, extend our working hours to nine o'clock. Uh, thank you. And, um, hmm, we have the partition of our customers more than two hundred, and I already send a copy to all of you guys. And I beg you, beg your guests to think about it, Tam. Thank you so much.
Hi. My name is Tammy Tabor. I'm a long-term Nevada County resident. I moved here in nineteen seventy-one. I'm a IT project manager, and I go to Spring Spa. I used to go at least twice a week. I have a medical condition that that massage really helps with the, moving the fluid in my, my feet and legs. And because of these reduced hours, I'm not able to go as much. And so it's, you know, negatively impacting my health. The only alternative I have is to go to Vella, Vella's, Vella's, which is another massage lo, in the Grass Valley area, which I don't understand why they would have different rules because I can go at seven PM to Vella, but I can't go to this location at seven. So the only reason I can think of is that there's some kind of discrimination going on, or, you know, because they are of a certain ethnic group and, and maybe some people have associated with sex or something, but that doesn't go on here. It's really a great group of people, the nicest people, very kind and very hardworking. So I really hope that you reconsider this ordinance and make a change because it really has impacted a lot of people's lives. So I thank you for your consideration. All right?
Just, just so the audience knows, that on public comment, we will hear your comments, but we don't respond at the meeting on public comment and take a look at all these things, and if there's possibility, we'll take a look at it. Okay, so. All right, okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Get really close to the microphone, hold it, pull it up a little bit, please, while we're still adjusting and getting everything adjusted. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Levine and council members, good evening, everybody. My name is Misty Alderman. I live in Nevada City for about the last ten years. I'm also a massage therapist. And for the last two years, I've been going to Crystal Massage to get massages, to kind of balance out my work. And it has been quite inconvenient since they had the new ordinance passed that they close at seven, because I work all day, and then I get off work and I like to go and get a massage at the end of my day of working. And so it has, you know, I understand that there's different issues when it comes to the massage industry. I've been in it for the last thirteen years. But I know that there is obviously a prejudice with certain types of massage. But I know this business personally, from going in the last two years, they don't do that type of activity. So this ordinance, I just ask if you guys would look into it to see if there could be an exception on the hour that they close because it is the time when a lot of us are able to go in and get massage in the evening time. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Not seeing any, I'll close the public comment section of the meeting. Consent items. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered a routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless, before the city council votes on the motion to adopt, members of the council, staff, or the public who has specific, specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. This is a roll call item. Okay, any changes from the DS? No changes, staff?
No changes from staff.
Thank you. Any changes? Papa? Okay. Not seeing any response.
I would make a motion that we approve the consent. Second.
Kristy, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes, thank you very much.
Five zero.
Item ten is a public hearing. City of Grass Valley Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Grant Number Thirteen Dash CBDG Dash Eight Nine Four Nine, accomplishments and final closeout. Staff, staff report? Okay.
Yes, sir, Mayor Levine, Councilmembers Lanslow, Community Development Department, along with Bjorn Jones of the Public Works Department. As you recall, in two thousand thirteen, the City of Grass Valley was awarded a Community Development Block Grant in the sum of two million dollars to fund four projects, namely sewer relining project, Love Building renovation project, housing element update, and an economic development study. With respect to the sewer relining project, approximately one-point-four million dollars was awarded to repair the sewer lines and reline those. The project prepared, relined approximately twenty-nine-hundred lineal feet of sewer lines, two thousand of which, two thousand lineal feet of which were the city's twenty-four-inch main line. The project finished up the tail end of the summer, and a notice of completion was authorized by the city council on October twenty-fourth of last year. With respect to the Love Building, approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars was awarded for the renovation of Love Building, including the thirty-four-hundred-square-foot building located at Condon Park. Optional upgrades, including a commercial kitchen and upgraded tenant improvements, were also included and were funded with program income funds. And ultimately, the city expended about eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars on that renovation. And that renovation was completed in June eighth of two thousand seventeen. A certificate of occupancy was issued, and a notice of completion was issued following that on September twenty-sixth of two thousand seventeen. The Love Building is currently occupied by Gold Country Community Services, providing programs and recreational exercise programs for seniors since its completion. The third item is the housing element update. Approximately thirty-three thousand dollars was awarded for the housing element update. Approximately twenty-six thousand dollars was expended with CDBG funds with planning and technical assistance grants. The city had a match, a five-thousand dollars match, so the city contributed five thousand toward that effort. The housing element is one of the required elements of the city's general plan. The city council ultimately approved, adopted the housing element on September twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, and was subsequently certified by the State Department of Housing and Community Development as compliant with House of Senate law, and that occurred on October seventh of two thousand fourteen. With respect to the last program, an economic development study, as you're aware, the city council elected not to pursue that project, and so we just had some nominal costs for the request proposals on that. It should be noted that although staff is recommending that we disencumber six-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, five-hundred, six-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, five-hundred dollars for grant funds, the city is required to use program income funds. When we rewarded the grant, we had about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of program income funds that had to be used prior to grant funds being, being utilized. During the duration of the contract, we amassed another about four-hundred thousand dollars. So we spent, you know, approximately eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars of program income funds on this project. Ultimately, with the total expenditures, we're just over two million dollars. The closeout report is required subsequent to the completion of the projects, and staff is asking the council authorize the final reports to HCD at the conclusion of this program. That concludes staff's presentation. Again, planning and engineering staff are here to address any comments or concerns the council may have. Thank you.
Before I open it to public hearing, are there any questions of staff? This is a notice public hearing. If anybody has any questions about closeout, please come to the podium. Thank you. Jeremiah?
Jedidiah Watson, three-two-two Mill Street. I'm on the board for Gold Country Community Services. Jake apologizes, she's very ill. She had planned to be here to speak on our behalf, but asked me to speak in her, in her place. The building, the Love Building, which we're operating out of, we're operating our activities and everything. Activities have increased, the building's great. We, we had hoped to have a commercial kitchen by now. We're also looking at some other things such as expanding on to the kitchen space, putting in some different things, and we're working with the city on those expansions. Some of the difficulties we have had has been the, there's no internet or phone service there right now. So before we can even move our offices over there, we're still facilitating the, the place, but running it from Old Tunnel Road. So it has created some complications for us, but we're looking to get that service in place so that we could.
Speak in the microphone, I know you're tall, but, yeah.
So we're looking to get that in place so that then we can start moving our offices over there and actually running the Love Building and focusing on marketing. There, you know, it was an older building, so most people don't realize the great work that went into revamping the building. But, yeah, we're, we're excited. We have ways to go, but, yeah, just wanted to give you an update on it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anybody else in public hearing for the closeout of this CDBG grant? If not, closed public hearing, back to the council. Any questions of staff or an authorization to move forward? You want to make a motion that we, that would be?
I'll make a motion that would conduct a public hearing and receive a summary of the CDBG Grant Number Thirteen Dash CDBG Dash Eight Nine Activities and Accompliments, accomplishments, and authorize staff to submit final reports and the closeout package to the State Department of Housing and Community Development.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, this is a voice vote, I believe, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, the next item are administrative items. Consideration of the purchase of property at three-oh-nine Mill Street. This is to approve the purchase price of the property at three-oh-nine Mill Street and authorize city manager to sign all real estate documents required to constitute the purchase. Tim, if I could give, oh, Tom.
I snuck over here, yes.
Where'd you, I can see you over there, so, yeah. I beg your pardon. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tom Last, Community Development.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tom Last, Community Development Director. Again, the item before you is a request to purchase a vacant parcel at 309 Mill Street. This is a previously, or it's currently a vacant site that previously contained an 11-unit apartment building. This was significantly damaged by a fire in 2009, and it was demolished in late 2009. Since then, the property's been on and off for sale. The city has looked at this as a potential opportunity for some short-term, a short-term parking solution that would serve the downtown area. Additionally, in the long term, we believe it can provide some opportunities for some redevelopment, a nice redevelopment property, and also potentially enhancement for the Wolf Creek Trail system. So we think it's a good, a good, good potential property to look at. I do, I just realized in the staff report, the property most recently was listed as 245,000, not 145,000 is listed in the report. It's been, so, $100,000 difference there. Apologize for that. However, the city did have an appraisal completed, and it came in at $220,000. So that is the price we can offer. We did meet with the property owner, and they accepted that offer. So we are, funding is available through the city's special project fund, and therefore we're requesting...
Questions at this time? Okay. Administrative item. We're open to public comment if anybody has a public comment. Thank you.
Jedediah Watson, 322 Mill Street. So, the, yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry. So first and foremost, we're all, I'm representing a couple of my neighbors that we all live right there. There's three houses that don't have driveways or parking in the back. We use the street. First and foremost, we're all for this. We really want the, I've talked with Tim, and we've discussed, you know, what the goal is for the property, and we really would like to see it be used for the trail, also for parking. The one thing that we do hope that you would plan is that we could use it for parking, because we are competing with the apartment complex right next door to it for six spaces. So, that's all. Thanks.
Any else? Otherwise, back to the DS, council. Any comments or motion?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I sat on the planning commission before this and city council before, after that. So it's been 15 years of watching properties that have become available toward the city hasn't been able to, hasn't acted upon it with, from will or financial ability. And to see some of these potential lots, the purpose that they have and the opportunities that we have, I think it's important that the city takes advantage of these opportunities because they seem to go away. You know, way back when we had redevelopment funds, and you watch the properties along, you know, main over here from Roundabout, those come and gone from foreclosure back into. And if we would have had the vision and the opportunity at the point, at that time, to grab ahold of those, we could have been able to do a lot. So I think this is a good visioning for the city. So I'm absolutely in support of it.
I would agree. I'm 10 years longer, but the same progression that you have done and watched over the years. And I think one of the things that I like about this property is that it's dual-purpose, that it serves a residential neighborhood, and it'll also serve the commercial neighborhood of downtown. We don't get that. There's a lot of conflict at times from people who work downtown parking in the neighborhoods, or people who live downtown taking up customer parking. And I think this is a really win-win situation for everybody because it, it's going to help out the neighborhood. It will help alleviate some of the parking issues that we have in downtown, especially when we have special events downtown that brings thousands of people in and not a lot of places to park. So I think this is a win situation for us.
I completely agree. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase price of the property at 309 Mill Street, APN 08-410-07, and authorize the city manager to sign all real estate documents required to consummate the purchase.
Great. And I'm just going to tag in one quick. I like that we have access to Wolf Creek there. And that's really important to me. So, it's great. All in favor? Oh, wait. This is a spending item. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Excitedly so, yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item number 12, housing development backlog reduction options, follow-up to council meeting of November 28th. The council reviewed and possibly approved, so. City manager?
Yes, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. Pull that microphone way up there, yeah. For some reason, we never put long enough cords on mics. This is a follow-up to a meeting we had in November, where staff presented to you, is basically a follow-up to the ERC and our Contractors Association, presented a backlog that we have in basically approved housing units that have not moved off the paper to actually improvement plans and other elements. Just to kind of revisit those issues, right now we have 903 housing units that have been approved, either by specific plans, which would be Loma Rica, which is the majority of those units, or tentative maps. 75 of those units are in final map review, which is, would be the next stage in moving forward. And of course, we have 37 units of those 903 under construction, which would be Ridge Meadows.
Such a smart thing.
So the purpose of this item is to look at what kind of things can the city do to spur some of this development, but maintain the character that we have in our community. With that, I've met with a lot of different folks, and a lot of different folks actually in the last couple of weeks, especially since these went out to the public. This first slide, which is a standard the city already has, is something that is available. One of the comments was, how can we provide more of a street-friendly typical section? So maybe not necessarily sidewalks on both sides, but something that is designed in such a fashion that maybe serves a limited number of units and provides access in the street itself. This is our resident alley. Typical section. Pretty much already available. 10 units or less could be built currently in this form. The unique feature to this is it drains to the center of the street, and I'll have another option that revises that. That was one of the comments that we received. As you'll see here, comment five was one of the things we actually added to the slide, and we'd be asking council to approve. This is a comment that we received actually from Anna Acton with Freed. Even though Freed's motto is accessibility, and we'll get into some of the other slides where she could definitely not support it because the core mission of Freed is providing accessibility, and her personal feeling is that can only be provided with sidewalks. We did take some of her comments that she provided, and this was one of them. And I spoke to some designers, and they thought it was a good comment also. But make sure that there's an accessible route of travel is required when we do these kind of roadway sections so that you can get from the roadway to buildings. And then also, when sidewalks are available, that there are accessible ramps and made available to everyone. So we added that comment to that section. This one is pretty much the same thing. It would be a new typical section, so this is not currently in city standards. But it would just be a slight modification of standard 13. It makes it look a little more like a standard road with curb and gutter, and it slopes and drains to the sides rather than to the middle. The main advantage here for us is from a street sweeping capabilities. Having the curb and gutter on the side actually allows us to pick up things a little bit easier than trying to drive down the road, because the brooms and stuff are on the outside of the street sweeper, not down the middle. So, again, it's just another option, pretty much a mimic of what we already have. The next option is where we got into some changes. And the highlighted things, a little hard to see here. I'm wondering if I can get the mouse to work here. At the top is the first change we made, which is highlighted. We reduced the typical section. This typical section was 32 feet. We reduced it by about five feet, because one of the comments we received from the developers was, anything you can do to reduce your typical section and provide the minimal travel widths that are needed for fire, police, and safety, saves money, and it also provides, you know, traffic calming. So our typical section was wider than it needed to be. So we worked with them and came up with a modified version of that that's a little bit narrower, does not allow parking, but this standard did not originally allow parking. This would be the first option of a typical section that we would consider possibly having or allowing sidewalk only on one side. And we added comments five and six associated with that. One of the things you'll see in red, it's a little hard to see maybe for the audience. We originally had 40 units or less where sidewalk may be considered optional. And then there's a whole section of design standard requirements that I will discuss in a moment that would go into play. In talking to the community and some of the other folks, they thought that number might be a little too large initially. And that's 40 units per street. So for a street length, they suggested, why don't we start with 20? And I think that's a reasonable number, because the intent of this and the goal of what we're doing is maintain accessibility, provide walkability, and provide bikeability. And the idea is, if you only have a few number of homes, the street is not a cut-through, and with the appropriate improvements, the street will become your walkable path. And kind of, I kind of will revert back to my childhood where I played football, I played basketball, I played basketball on the street. That's where we lived. We rode our bikes on the street. We lived on the street. And there was only one or two cars, you know, an hour, and they were either parents yelling at us to get out of the street, or people visiting that were wondering why we were playing in the street. But I think that's the kind of community that I have, you know, becoming the city manager, I've constantly heard. Those are the core elements that people are coming to me is, they want walkable, they want accessible, they want bikeable. They want those kind of elements. And that's our goal with some of these cross-sections that I will be presenting tonight. So looking at reducing it to 20, I thought was a reasonable. And these can always be changed. There is nothing set in stone with any of these. The next section, which would be section 15, is very similar, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. Very similar modifications, except for this allows for parking on one side. And the sidewalk removal is only allowed for these minor residential streets. So when you get into primary residential, collectors, arterials, the city 100% agrees sidewalk is needed on both sides in those situations. So next gets into some of the wording. And bear with me, because I'm an engineer and we write in engineering ease. So through this process, we received some comments, and I want to go over those. The top section that's shown here is what is actually in the staff report. Based on comments that were received by various groups, we kind of reworded this a little bit. One, we wanted to state the overall goal is to provide accessibility, walkability, and bikeability in our residential developments. It was asked that we put some leeway in there, that someone should be approving this. It shouldn't just be carte blanche, that, you know, I don't want sidewalks on here. There's got to be some checks and balances. So it was recommended that we put it subject to the approval by the city engineer. And then again, we reduced it down to 20 instead of 40 units. The other big element here, and I'm going to hold off on discussing this in detail more to show you kind of what we're talking about. So I think this will help clarify things a little bit. So we, we would be proposing to actually add this exhibit. This was not included in the package, but put this in our design standard, so there would be a sample for everyone to see. So the top straight street would be your primary residential street or a higher classification. That would require sidewalks on both sides, your typical street. What we're looking at is then when you have a subdivision, and you have a minor street, minor residential street coming off of that, what situations would the city consider would be appropriate? One of the things we want to make sure is it's walkable, bikeable, and accessible. So what we have come up with is that at the intersections with an accessible or a primary residential or a collector, or whatever that might be, we put in either a raised crosswalk or a raised intersection. That's what symbolized in these two things. And the intent of that is it's a physical element that will reduce the speed, but it also promotes safe walkability and those kind of things. The other thing is if they decide that, you know, we want to bring sidewalk into a certain point of the street, but then we need to stop, whether it's terrain or something else, there is a physical means to connect that to the other crosswalk. So we do not leave you at a dead-end sidewalk. So you would have to construct a raised crosswalk, and that's what is shown over in this area. In addition to that, we want other traffic calming physical measures installed to keep the worst offenders typically are the people that actually live in the subdivision, because they are familiar with it, and that's why we want these hard fixed improvements. That every 500 feet, they either put in a concrete dip or other kind of traffic calming measure, that there's physically something there to slow you down. Those are the kind of the general ideas. And then that goes back to our verbiage, which the exhibit I just saw has an error that we'll need to change. But we had a recommendation with that, with the traffic calming, which would be bullet. Probably just easier to go through each of these bullets. One, we had a suggestion to add creating accessible, walkable, and bikeable development, which I think is important. Two, the subdivision must provide a separate trail within the subdivision. And what that means is they need to provide some kind of loop trail so that there is a spot for people to go walk, in case if there's not sidewalk on their side. Or it need to connect into existing trail systems. That's one of the reasons some folks said, well, shouldn't someone be reviewing that? Because what if someone just created a trail that went 10 feet in a circle, and that's not really the trail? That was not the intent of staff, and that was not the intent of the people we met with when putting this together, that it would provide a physical area for people to walk or bike and congregate. The next item would be traffic calming, which I kind of just pointed out, raised intersections, raised crosswalks, and dips. Bull bouts would not suffice for this comment or reduction, because as much as they provide a deterrent from speeding, once you know the bull bout's there, your car can bypass them. So it's good for someone new driving on the street. But if you live there, which I find to be our worst offenders of speeding on streets, they will learn that all they have to do is drive in the center of the road, and they can bypass it, and you can take the turn at a higher speed. So we want physical elements that would actually slow traffic down and maintain accessibility for pedestrians, both at intersections and at 400-foot intervals, which is a reduction from what is in the staff report instead of 500 feet. The other comment was, there should be some discretion for the city engineer, because what if the street is only 401 feet? Do we really need some kind of improvement at that one additional foot? Which I thought was a fair statement, too. Or maybe it needs more based on the density of the homes that are being proposed. And the final is just another statement to kind of make sure that the intent of this design standard comes through, that pedestrian connectivity to existing and future sidewalks, trails, and street intersections must be preserved and maintained. So those are the concepts that, in working with some local engineers and some developers, thought this would help us move forward with some projects. I think the key that staff is looking at is that we are not sacrificing with, for accessibility, walkability, and bikeability. That we're turning that roadway section into something that can be used for those functions. With that, I open it up to council for any questions.
I don't have any questions, per se. I'm feeling pretty comfortable. So, do you have any?
I just have a comment. I think it's a, it's an excellent proactive idea to, to help overcome some of these financial obstacles developers have when starting these projects without really compromising the, the walkability of it. We all know that more housing is really needed in our community. And housing has been approved, so I think if, if this is something that could really help that, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Jeremiah? Sure?
I do have a couple of questions. I guess...
I guess first and foremost, we talk about, right now we have twenty, we're talking about twenty units or twenty houses. You know, a lot of our developers, they come in and they do twenty, they'll do another twenty, and they'll do another twenty. How does that work when we start totaling those up? In other words, they come in, they build twenty, now they're going to add twenty on to that or another twenty on to that. At what point are they, you know, they can kind of, they sprawl a little if you will and not have to go back and necessarily do the sidewalks that they would have had to have done if they would have come in with, say, sixty?
So, in this case, it's twenty per street. So, and it would have to be a minor residential street. So, more than likely, that street would be a dead end or a cul-de-sac. You're not going to get very far with twenty units. But we would have to take into account your situation that if it was on a street that had potential growth, they would need to design for the ultimate growth and the ultimate number of trips, not for just their individual project.
But again, how do we go back? Because we know that this is how, we know this is how they kind of move. I mean, we haven't seen a Morgan Ranch where they go in and they did this in a long time. We don't see, our developers don't come in, we don't typically see a hundred and fifty homes all go up in a year like we do in the valley. We see thirty at a time, twenty at a time. And I understand, but it's, I mean, again, that's all going to fall on the city engineer's shoulders at that point, which could be a challenge.
I think Morgan Ranch would be a good example. So, Morgan Ranch Drive would not qualify. There's too much traffic, too many homes on it. So, we're looking for some of the spur streets off that. And when they would come in with their final map, because there will be sufficient number of homes, we would condition it at that point in time that, okay, these streets, A, B, C, and D, we would allow for sidewalk on one side. But where you have a connector or something higher than a minor residential, you will have to design those to the other standards. So, it should be known at the time of application for the subdivision and the subdivision map.
Well, that's just kind of confusing on, on the slide. We talk about the city engineer having the ability to approve it. When we're talking about most of the, most of the projects would work their way through, you know, DRC, Planning Commission, and eventually council potentially. So, that would have been addressed at that time and through that process. So, when you're talking about city engineer approval, when is that particular, when is that then?
What they are looking at is this would be a standard accepted by council and the city. So, in the situations we listed here, they would, again, they would be bringing their final map and everything forward through whatever the final body is to approve it. But they're basically saying, we're designing it to a city standard. The city engineer has approved it, so it should take them through the process. That doesn't ever mean the final acting body always has the ability to say, no, we want something different than that standard. But I think the intent they're looking for is they have some assurity before they submit their application that, okay, we're doing it per this standard. We've talked to the city engineer, he is okay with it. So, we're starting knowing hopefully that.
I agree. And I think these are great things. I think when we start talking about any type of affordability, my only concern is that, you know, when the five of us are not sitting here and, and you've retired and we have that developer comes in and, you know, forty years from now, this is the standard then. So, when we talk about that little caveat, the city engineer at that point in time has that freedom to say yay or nay. Do we want to have that or are we, or do we want something more definitive just a little bit? I just know with twenty years from now, when this conversation is.
And I think it's incumbent upon whoever's there would have to go back and change the city standard.
So, that's what I'm saying. This, this becomes the standard. That's.
It's, it's, it's an option.
It is an option for council consideration. And please note, the city reviews our standards and brings updates to our standards on a yearly basis. So, nothing here, if we decide this isn't what we want, can't come back. I would also say this is one of probably multiple things staff should be looking at and bringing back to council to look at, how can we continue to improve this? And how can we remove this backlog that we have of these paper units and get them actually into wood and going vertical?
I absolutely agree with the whole process and why. I just was trying to, just for conversation purposes, I just know that we're creating this little weird gray area at some point in time, you know?
Well, that's what, I mean, if you don't evolve and change with the times and the trends as your community develops and builds and or rebuilds, then you get, you get nothing. Because as far as, I mean, I've been here for twenty-five years almost and I haven't seen any city standards change except for the zone-based code. But we still had a lot of obstacles to development, even though we updated our zoning, you know, our building zoning codes. So, I think, I think it's an opportunity to see if people are going to submit applications based on these new standards and make it a more reasonable opportunity for them to develop something.
Is there any public comment on this item? Ralph, would you please come to podium? Thanks for hanging in there. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Your pleasure.
My name is Ralph Silverstein. I live in Grass Valley. And I'm here speaking on behalf of Community Environmental Advocates or CEA. We're a new group. One of the things we are really advocating for is walkability. So, I just would say in listening to the November twenty-eighth meeting here, I was much encouraged that so many of you said you were very concerned about walkability and, and keeping a community spirit, you know, where you can have a neighborhood where it's safe to walk around and not diminish that. Our organization is not opposed to the changes to streets and walks if it improves walkability and helps address affordable housing needs. Demographics and market forces are such that changes to reduce development costs are unlikely to solve affordable market problems. There are no easy solutions and it's a supply and demand thing. So, we have tremendous pressure from the valley, high costs down there and a lot of demand on housing. So, I appreciate Councilman Foer's comments and concern on this because there is no guarantee here. But there are some good ideas in the proposed changes. Reducing street widths provides other benefits if done wisely. Less impermeable surfaces, more room for infill, traffic calming. But it is no guarantee that these changes will reduce prices. And changes we make today will shape our neighborhoods for many years to come. So, changes should be made if and only if they improve walkability, bikeability, connectivity, and help make our community more enjoyable and livable. In other words, the decisions to change rules should not be made solely to reduce construction costs. The guiding question should be, are these design improvements? And are they a win-win because they help improve walkability and livability? And might also help get some needed housing built. So, if that is your goal, we think you're on the right path. Thank you very much.
Matthew Coulter, Grass Valley. I would like to ask the police chief if he thinks it's a good idea for the children to play in the street. Probably not. In our day and age, most people are on their cell phones or multitasking while driving. I wouldn't recommend anyone's child playing any street at this point. It's very dangerous. Pedestrian deaths in America up twenty percent in the last three years, twenty percent. Walking on our streets, bicycling on our streets, moving around. I had a friend in town visiting. We had to cross two twenty-five mile an hour streets to leave Empire Mine and get into town. Twenty-five mile an hour streets. We had to run across those streets to cross them without being hit. And those are our neighborhoods. We already have so many sidewalks that don't connect. And when these developments like Timberwood Estates has a very narrow frontage on Brunswick, they're required to do a sidewalk across the front. But it doesn't connect to the sidewalk that will then connect that development into Brunswick. There's just a big dirt patch. So, as far as connecting things, that's a really good challenge for our town for existing sidewalks. They've been in place for thirty, forty years. There are still sidewalks to nowhere. It'd be great to hear the council direct more towards walkability and not so much catering to the car, the car, the car, the car. Because as I see in our town, more people are getting out of their cars. More people are walking, more people are riding, more people are taking public transportation. And right now that we don't have enough crosswalks existing and when we say we're going to require these things with new development, the apartment complex on Bennett Street that was put in, they were promised a crosswalk. They didn't get one. So, it's very odd that it's, it's a developer's dream, this place. They can come up here and do what they want and say, well, you know, it's done, sorry. Because even the crosswalk that you just said it's finished, it's not finished. No one's even swept the gravel away from the construction project, but now it's finished. It's not even striped, but it's finished. So, there's a lot to be taken into consideration with making this town less walkable, less safe, and putting people out into the street. Or why don't we make a trail across everyone's front yard? So, then we can all be more neighborly and don't let people put up fences so we can all just share. Thank you.
Any other comment? Okay, back to the council. Okay, any other comments from this side or this side?
Just to respond to one thing that Ralph mentioned. I know initially when we started working with this, the goal, the goal really is to try and get some more housing built in the community. And one way to do that is to make it feasible for a developer to come in and do it. And typically that does, makes a process easier for them perhaps. It makes it more, you know, they have some sort of surety that what they're proposing is going to be acceptable because, you know, we've changed our standards a little bit. I don't think it's the goal of the city for them to come in and make more money to put in their pockets. It's basically to make some of these projects be more feasible to see if we can, if we can get some of them built. And infrastructure costs, I mean, the cost of building a house is the cost of building a house. But the infrastructure costs are what really puts a lot of this stuff out of X, out of touch for people to be able to do it. So, if we can somehow help facilitate the infrastructure costs here, I think we will see some market rate housing be developed, which in turn are less expensive homes in Grass Valley that have got skyrocketed because we haven't built any new housing. Prices will come down. It's a total supply and demand issue. So, I think anything we can do to encourage some development to come into the community is a good thing.
Okay, I just want to make, okay, I can't.
One is the last word.
Oh, okay. Well, then, fine. I, I just think that we are, we are working towards intermodal or different kinds of processes where we have opportunities for people to have cross-town opportunities of, of transportation, whether it's walking or bicycle or. And I think we've actually finally started to make some great strides in that direction. And if we have connectivity with that, with other developments that come on board, I think that's very helpful and very important. I do have, go to neighborhoods that actually sound and look very similar to this. And there's a neighborhood feeling that I think is really strong in these environments. And not having wider, having narrower roads. I wish Scotia Pines had narrower roads and I was trying to promote that when Scotia Pines came along. There's a feeling that happens in those environments that brings their neighbors together and slows down what the cars do. And so, I, I think our outcome very much will create more neighborhood involvement and connectivity. People out on their streets more, you know. It's always nice to have Randis out on the front of the houses too, but we'll see how that works. But streets and traffic calming in the streets is really important. And I think this adds to that and people, I don't know. I'm, I'm not as fearful of getting run, run over. There's a very great possibility. But I walk downtown a lot. And I personally prefer to walk in the street and I feel really comfortable walking in the street. It's just a feeling that I get that makes it feel neighborly. So, with that, it's back to you guys. If anybody would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we review and approve the revised city standard, ST dash thirteen, ST dash thirteen point two, ST fourteen, with the changes that you had, the recommendations from staff, and ST fifteen and City Design Standard Table six dash one and Section six dash six subsection E.
Second.
Well, it's what I said and then what they changed.
So, there's a motion and a second, and this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Okay, item number thirteen, implementation of a police K-nine, K-nine program. Is that code? Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, Alex Gamalgar, your Chief of Police. And thank you for taking the time to hear this item tonight. Before you this evening is an item that you heard a little bit about in August of two thousand seventeen when we brought forward the concept and requested your permission and direction to move forward with exploring and implementing the, the parts and pieces that it would take to start a K-nine program within the Grass Valley Police Department. So, as, as you may have recalled, at that meeting, we talked about the advantages of, of K-nines in police work. You had the opportunity to meet Rutiger, which is the Vaticity's working K-nine and his handler and ultimately provided direction for us to move forward with feasibility and seeing what it would take. As we talked about, K-nine teams provide valuable service to our community by reducing crime. They help in apprehending suspects. They detect narcotics, assist in faster return of missing persons, and provide opportunities for police and community connectiveness, both in the community and with our youth. And just some statistics that you might find interesting. And when we were developing our programs and we started looking at the, the ability to utilize a K-nine and what our call for service loads are, we realized that in fact we, we have a significant number of calls that, that could benefit, could benefit from having a K-nine available. In a two-year time period, in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we responded to almost a total of fifty thousand calls for service. Of those nineteen, little over nineteen hundred were alarm activations. Six hundred and forty-two drug-related calls for service, of which five hundred and thirteen resulted in narcotics-related reports. We respond to three hundred and twelve missing persons calls and three hundred and seventeen burglar reports with a total of eighteen hundred theft reports and over twenty-five hundred arrests. All that to say, we are quite busy as a police department. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that our police officers are very proactive in the work that they do. So, we have reactive calls which come from the community. And then we have the proactive calls, which all are inclusive within that forty-nine thousand number. And many of those, as example, drug-related calls and narcotics-related reports are based on self-initiated proactive activities. As we developed the K-nine program, Lieutenant Mattione, I'd like to thank him especially for his work on this. He spent a lot of time developing a number of things. I'll talk to you about in a minute. We contacted allied agencies. We worked with police K-nine professionals in, in other areas around our region. And we developed what our program would look like. Some of the things that we considered were our policy and procedures. That's obviously an important component of a successful K-nine program as it relates to ensuring that we're doing things correctly within the law and protecting the community, our officers, the K-nine, and all those considerations. We have a draft policy that could be implemented at a moment's notice that we, we know provides for all those components. We also went forward with the handler and K-nine selection and development process, which was developed by the command staff of the police department, posted for interest. The police department ultimately made a selection for that should we move forward with the program. made a selection for that, should we move forward with the program. That was a review of resumes, prior evaluations for performance, letters of interest, review of the officer's performance, and then also interview panels. And then the handler is selected based on a demonstrated interest, response to the position posting, the requisite experiences, a home suitability visit to make sure that the home is safe, and for both the dog and for the handler and their family in the neighborhood, and a consultation with a K-9 selection and training contractor. Some of the considerations for a program is that the ongoing training is consistent with police officer standards and training related to ongoing in-service training, which is, in California, would result in at least a bi-monthly training, one-day training course per month, every two weeks, where the handler team with the K-9 works on all the components of what they would do within their patrol duties, and make sure their certifications are current. And just a little piece on that, just, we evaluated some of the different things a K-9 might do for Grass Valley. As you're probably aware, there's a number of things that K-9s do, we would be limiting ours specifically to apprehension, narcotics detection, tracking, and then socialization with the public as it relates to the community connectiveness. And then patrol benefits, go back to what I was talking about with our calls for service, they provide a tremendous value to other officers by locating and apprehending suspects in a manner that protects the officers and the community from harm. As you may recall, just last week, we had an incident where we waited for approximately an hour for a Placer County K-9 to respond to clear crawl space in a home where we believe there may have been an armed subject, and that is a prime example where we have a serious crime that had been committed or believed to be committed, and we utilized the K-9 for a safe search environment. They operate within the capacity of a patrol position, so that we would still have that police officer available, much like they are today with the addition of a K-9 in their vehicle rather than a separate... We're not going to be removing any services from the patrol capacity by adding a K-9, rather that will become a team together, doing the same kind of work they do today. And then our K-9 vehicle will also be outfitted to be able to transport and encustia individuals, so we wouldn't have to rely on allied agencies or other Grass Valley PD staff when we need to transport somebody. And then we've also taken into consideration the staff schedules and training implications to ensure that we're able to still staff the street appropriately. And then last, but not least, the financing and funding sources in order to make a K-9 program move forward. In your staff report, there are two primary spreadsheets, if you will, the first one relating to the startup costs, and the second one relating to the ongoing costs. The, let's start with the startup costs, because that would be the initial one-time costs in order to start the program, which include considerations such as the dog itself, the initial training, which is a multi-week initial certification training for the handler and for the dog, the monthly training expense on, for the rest of this fiscal year, and then the appropriate equipment for the dog itself, in addition to the vehicle, vehicle equipment, and upfitting and K-9 equipment, you know, leashes, collars, things like that, as well as the kennel for the dog to reside in at the handler's home. Those items are kind of broken into two different components within the startup costs, because the first of which, we have had a generous contribution and offer to help purchase the dog in those items you see at the top of that staff report on 13-4, from the Rudiger Foundation. Rudiger Foundation is a local 501(c)(3) organization that, mission is to help local law enforcement agencies in our region acquire K-9s and associated equipment. And if there's any questions of them, Tina Vernon is their treasurer, and she's here tonight. So they've committed up to $25,000 to help us with the acquisition of the dog, the initial training, the any monthly expenses within this calendar year, and the ballistic vest for the dog itself. Then the vehicle costs and upfitting costs and K-9 equipment would actually be, I would propose that it would come from developer impact fees that have been reserved for the police department. Those fees are designed to provide enhanced services or new programs for things that the police department can do to help meet the needs of our community as it has grown and changed over time. Those fees are fees that are paid by developers during the development of projects, and a portion of those fees, based on our study, are allocated to police department reserve funds, and those, there are funds available within that fund for those startup costs. So this, the startup costs would not touch the police department general fund operating budget. On a go-forward basis, however, we anticipate the costs for training, handler costs under FSLA, vehicle costs and maintenance, and then the dog costs themselves. Some of those, we would propose, moving into the next budget year, we would be sure to budget them within our police department budget. The Rudiger Foundation has also been kind enough to offer to pay for that ongoing $300 a month training, which is the cost for the dog and the handler to go to their bi-monthly training. Most of the costs within the city-funded portion are costs that, based on our current fiscal year spending, would pretty much could be absorbed without any significant budget adjustments, with the one caveat possibly being the handler costs. This year, we don't anticipate any need for a budget adjustment because of prorated staff vacancies and things like that. But moving forward, we'd work with the finance director to make sure we've adequate funds in the following fiscal years. With your approval tonight, we are, we would be ready to move forward with the acquisition of the vehicle and start the build process, work towards the acquisition of the K-9 itself, get a slot within the training course that starts in May, if everything lines up, and then potentially be looking at having an active program by midsummer to early fall, depending on the training time and making sure all the certifications are in place. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or Tina's here, Lieutenant Mattione is here as well, and Evan Butler, our proposed K-9 handler, is in the back.
Still docking dogs tonight. No questions.
That was not a highly trained sophisticated.
No, I just realized I'm 20% of the way there, and I gotta get a police dog.
I have a couple of questions, because I unfortunately was not here in August, so I didn't get to meet the dog. But I understand that he's very beautiful and very helpful in Nevada City. How old is the dog when you get him?
Usually they're right around a year, sometimes just a little bit older. They've already undergone extensive training, and they're usually the country of origin with law enforcement breeders and trainers.
So when you get him, they're like pretty much full-size?
Yeah, when you get him, they're already, correct. Yeah, unfortunately, we don't get a puppy.
Because Jason wanted to take it home with him, because he...
I don't qualify.
And then how many years of service do the dogs provide usually?
On average, probably six to seven years, some longer, some shorter, depending on, you know, there can be injuries or things like that, that can retire a dog early, but for the most part, six to seven years is a relatively safe number.
Once we have the program in place, after our dog retires, then we can apply to get another dog?
Yeah, and it just is a matter of, as law enforcement changes and the communities we serve change, what exactly we train the dog for. One thing about dogs is you sort of select them based on the certain things they are wanting to train, they train them for. You can add certain things, but you can't add others. One example is marijuana detection. Previous police dogs, a lot of them are still trained for that, that potentially poses a problem under Proposition 64, because you wouldn't necessarily want to do a search of someone who has legal previously contraband.
That dog would be very busy in downtown Grass Valley during the...
Right, so traditionally, new law enforcement police dogs are not trained for that, but maybe a school dog would be, so it's just, but you can't untrain it once you train it, right?
Lisa's really trying to take you down the road for a police cat.
Sure.
Well, my thought was, if the dog is not kept at the police department, you guys could actually have a cat over at the police department. But, you know, just a thought. So, and then the type of breed that they are, are we getting a German Shepherd, or do we know what kind of a breed we're going to get?
We don't know for sure. Some of the common ones are German Shepherds and Belgian Malinois. If you didn't know the difference, you may not know the difference between a black-and-tan Belgian Malinois and a black-and-tan traditional shepherd. But, you know, there are obviously differences, but as far as what they're trained for, they both can do the work.
And so I'm assuming that the dog will work a 40-hour week, or whatever your shift is, but...
Whatever Evan works.
But is it on call if you, if, so that means your handler is also on call if he needs to come out for a situation?
Right, if the handler's available, they would come out. And then there's an amount of care and feeding and things like that that goes along with the handler duties. And so the handler ultimately really, the dog becomes integrated with the handler and their household to the degree that is appropriate. So in the cases of a lot of our K-9 deployments that we, when we request a dog, lots of times, if there's one on duty within the region, that's great. If not, then dispatcher, somebody is calling, in this case, our handler, looking to have them start towards our location for the incident that they're being requested.
So our dog would assist other communities as well?
Potentially, yes, yeah. And with Nevada City having their dog within the region, we can, we'll look ultimately at scheduling too, to try and get the most benefit of having a K-9 within our region. The next closest is Placer County and occasionally CHP.
Yeah, I got a question. Since we ban animals, I feel kind of bad at the farmer's market. Would that dog be allowed?
Well, it's a service dog, so it would be allowed.
You're too funny. No, I think it's a great idea. As you know, I'm been a big proponent of getting one for, not only because it is a good safety tool for the officers, it allows them to search places like the crawl space and not, but an officer's life in danger. But they are also a great public relations for the community as well. These dogs are amazing animals, and, you know, they're, ultimately, they become the handler's pet. And normally, when they retire, they retire to the family, because it becomes part of the family. And that's how it works, because that is that, that will be Evan's partner, just like there was another officer in the car. So...
Do they have a retirement system?
Yeah, it's called the handler. Traditionally, what you see in a lot of jurisdictions, and we'll have to get this exactly figured out, but you see ultimately a contract that at retirement, the handler may purchase the dog for a dollar or something like that, and then they take on all ownership, care, indemnify the city against any injuries, pre-existing injuries, anything like that, that the dog could have incurred, so the handler becomes the owner, for all intents and purposes, as it relates to vet visits and things like that at that point.
It's really depreciate fast.
So when you know what dog you're going to get, just like an adoption, can you get a picture, so we can see what she's, male or female, what it would look like?
Yeah, we'll definitely, yeah.
We'll put it up here on the podium for people to wait to see, you know, when we get our dog. I think it's exciting.
Maybe St. Perrin's Day 2019.
Have him be, he'll... Dog like that, those pasties.
They're good pets, they're good. They're high quality.
Coming from a cat owner.
Cat might like him.
This is an administrative item, but if anybody in the audience has a question, please, don't hesitate to come up. Thank you.
Thomas Morgan Ranch Drive, just a couple of comments. I'm surprised Officer Butler has room for another dog. But he would be perfect selection for the handler, for sure. I think that the Nevada County Law Enforcement and Fire Council should be approached for some money in this regard, and I would expect the Rudiger Foundation could do some great fundraising with the addition of this dog to Grass Valley. Everybody likes the idea of a dog, and I'm sure he could get a lot of financial support. I'm all for it.
Matthew Coulter, how does this dog for Grass Valley compare to the cost breakdown for Nevada City?
Questions come this way?
Right. I don't have the Nevada City numbers right in front of me. This overall program costs are a little bit higher, specifically as it relates to the dog itself. Without getting into all the nitty-gritty details, there's multiple companies that you can actually go acquire the dog from, though through consultation with K-9 professionals in our industry, and in consultation with folks at Nevada City. We've selected a company that we're going to make our first look at a dog at, a company that acquires the dogs, much like many other ones overseas in Europe, brings them over here, but they actually spend time training them up front versus putting them on display for handlers to choose, basically the day after they come back from their airplane ride. And then they also provide a much longer guarantee for certification, that your dog will get certified, will act the same when you have it six weeks from now, six months from now than when you selected it. So those costs are about $7,000, $8,000 higher. And then some other things have gotten a little bit more expensive since Nevada City, like vehicle acquisition and things like that. So it's right around $15,000 to $20,000 higher in overall program costs.
I'm hoping the dog will be a better dog too, because when they got Rudiger, he was definitely, like his ribs were sticking out and stuff, he was pretty rough. The transport vehicle, can you transport two prisoners or only one? Is it...
The two, it's, it...
I'm sorry.
It's a 60/40 kennel and secure prisoner transport, so the dog takes up 60%, much like a 60/40 split bench seat. Next to that is the 40% single seat that you could do a transport.
Thank you, long overdue.
It's better than having me.
The dog always rides in the kennel when it's in the car.
Correct. And these kennels and things, as you probably are aware, and that's a lot of the build costs in the vehicles, there's special air conditioning, special monitoring, and communication to the handler at all times, and door releases and alarms and things like that, should the air conditioning fail. And the ability for the handler, if he was dealing with a call, gets into a physical confrontation, can't get back to the vehicle, can actually release the door from their, from their person.
This is, for me, this is such a different thing than I ever thought I'd ever deal with in my life. And I remember dogs, but they were on the other side. And so I'm really excited about this, and I, you know, the staff that we have, and I know that it, when a motion is made and approved, it will be a pretty amazing thing, so.
I would like to make the motion to approve required expenditures to move forward with the acquisition of a police patrol K-9 and associated equipment and training.
Second. I think we could do this as a voice vote, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, nice report. Here, doggy, 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 doggy.
Not here, doggy, doggy, doggy.
Okay, brief report from council?
You're so funny.
I'll start it off.
Yes, please.
I attended the California Cultural District Meeting, January 25th, the business incentive kickoff at the Foothill Events Center, the Arts Council meeting on the 6th of February, and then also, well, actually, that was the awards, and then the Arts Council... And then the Arts Council Meeting here at the 8th, a lot of arts. And then I attended the daddy-daughter dance, the first one. She, little daughter's 18 months old, and she loves to, loves to dance around the house. I was really excited to take her. Got to see Jason there, and it's a great, great, great evening. Especially for a great fundraiser for DVSAC, so. We have a great community full of great fathers and a great future with little daughters, so. It was a great event. Heart just exploded.
Jam.
Okay, let's see. I did interviews during the Point in Time Homeless Count, which was really interesting to actually have conversations one-on-one with, with a lot of the people seeking, seeking services and finding out that, and they were all so different as to why they were there to seek the services. Some of them had been there before and all they wanted was their gift card and to go get something to eat and do the interview, and a lot of them were actually looking for some help. So it was, it was really, it was well, it was well done. I, we had our final oversight board for the successor agency. It will now be turned over to the county and become a county successor board. It's just part of the poll, the whole process. Let's see, I went to a Rotary fundraiser. I went to the Nevada County Law and Fire Council Meeting, which is really interesting. And it provides a lot of information about what's going on in public safety, both fire and in, and, and in law enforcement as well. And it also includes the state parks and that type of thing, so that was really good. They, I did a little, the on-the-town interview with them. See, I went to the Arts Council Reception, which was really well-attended, where Peggy was honored with the very first award. I'm sure Howard will talk about that. I attended an awards reception for women, outstanding women in legislature, in the legislature, in California Legislature, for California Women Lead. And this morning, I spent my morning at a seminar on addressing America's opioid problem. So, I'm done now.
That's a lot of stuff. What do you say?
I'm done now.
So I also did interviews for the Point in Time Count for the, with Salvation Army and the County and Hospitality House. It was, it was very eye-opening to actually sit down and talk with people who are homeless. The interviews are confidential, so I don't, you know, I don't wanna give it a lot away, but it, it's heartbreaking and it's encouraging to see that people were actually asking for help. And, you know, one myth that's out there is that people come here for the services that are provided. I talked to six people, five of the six were Nevada County natives, young, grew up here, had family here. The one person that I spoke to who, who wasn't from here, he moved here for the same reason that we all come here, because this is a great place and it's beautiful. And he actually had work, he just didn't have a place to live, so it was, it was very interesting. Lots of misconceptions about the homeless in our community. I also attended the meeting that was held at the Lutheran Church, I believe. They did a two-part series on homeless, and I attended the first part on the 27th. And Brendan Phillips from the county spoke and talked about the plans that the county is working on in dealing with the homeless and talked about Housing First and a couple of other things. It was very, it was well-attended, there were some really great questions. And I think that the community is very interested in educating themselves on the homeless issues. And I don't know if anybody went to the follow-up, that was the following week, but that was, people from Hospitality House, I believe, were gonna be there. I have been working on the Foothill Celebration Event for Downtown Grass Valley, which is our annual wine and this year beer tasting event. It is March 3rd in downtown from 1:00 to 4:00. There's tickets available through the downtown and through the wineries downtown and through the Vintners Association, so we would welcome everybody to come out and support the Downtown Association. And it's a great event, though it's gonna be 70 degrees that day, I've heard. Maybe, hopefully. And I think that was it. Spent a week in New York, that was, that was the highlight of...
And saw Bruce Springsteen in concert, yeah.
So, it's been a busy few weeks.
And do you always notice how she looks at you when she says beer?
She does, even though we share...
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, maybe you got the problem.
I think it's because he's young, he's younger, you're young, but he's younger.
He is younger.
He's my beer.
I think you know more about beer, though.
I think, I think you just got classified as a millennial tonight, didn't you?
Oh, you had to bring that up, huh?
Okay, real quickly, I attended the Executive Committee, or the ERC Board Meeting and Executive Committee as well. Some things that are happening at the ERC is that the ERC has taken kind of a different path in sense of, instead of hiring an executive director, they're taking the funds that they would typically use that would go towards an executive director and actually hiring consultants to do certain stratos of work. And I think it's kind of a really decent approach. Instead of having one person that has to wear 3,000 hats that aren't necessarily experts in anything or everything, and these folks who now need to go, if you need business consulting, we have SBC there, we hired a recruiting firm to attract businesses and hired a consultant that's, that's taking on some tourism. So I think it's kind of a, it's a different approach than they've done in the past, and it seems to be working versus having some, one person carry the whole load. And those, again, their expertise might not be able to be able to handle all of that load. So kind of interesting things happening there. I did attend the daddy-daughter dance. You know, for those folks that don't know what the daddy-daughter dance is about, it's not just about going with your daughter to the dance, but it's really teaching your daughter how, you know, you should be treated. And I took my daughter and she taught me how I need to treat her.
I bet she did.
And it took a good, you know, I felt like I was a sixth grade dance. It took her a while to realize that I wasn't the worst dancer there. And we finally got her to dance with me for the last few dances, but it was a really great night and it is a really good event. I also had lunch with Mr. Schofield Supervisor, again, talking about some economic development things, and did KNCO Tom's show, and they're gonna be doing the ERC every Wednesday. First Wednesday of the month, the ERC is gonna do a little show on that. Hopefully, for your benefit, it won't just be me, but we'll get other board members cycling through there to talk about happenings in their sector. And so that'll be on KNCO the first Wednesday of every month. And attended the Chamber Board Meeting as well.
Hi.
Sounds good. Okay, so Small Business Administration did an economic workshop at Foothill Event Center, and I welcomed everybody to that. And they worked with SCORE and a number of agencies. One Stop, what's formerly called One Stop. And so there, there were a lot of USD, Department of Agriculture and grants and a lot of tables, and I did the welcome, and that was okay. I did the MCCLI Elected Forum at the Rude Center with Supervisor Weston and Supervisor Schofield and Mayor Strauss and myself. I don't think anybody believed what I said, but it was okay. I was at the Art, Cultural Arts District Kickoff Meeting on the panel, and that was at the Rude Center at, and that was the day it snowed.
Yes, it is.
Yeah?
Terrified ride home.
Didn't you have a good time?
No.
You ride a Disneyland for you?
Way too much snow on the ground, and I don't have four-wheel drive.
Yeah.
It was scary.
There was Arts Council First Peggy Levine Arts and Community Service Award, Award for, to Julie Baker, and it was an honor to be there. And I do appreciate them honoring Pegs. And I think Julie was totally... She was, she was really moved by, by the award, so. I went to the Grass Valley Downtown Association's Economic Vitality Committee Meeting, talking about assessments and programming and some other things, business recruitment. That took me down memory lane. I met with Amber Jo from Center for the Arts. And I was at the League Women Voters Meeting on Parks this last Saturday. And Supervisor Weston and Dawn from Nevada City and Marty Coleman-Hunt. And we were all talking about trails and parks and future and how, what the county wants to do and what we're doing. And so I think our trail system is finally off the ground and moving forward. So with that, the meeting is adjourned. So thank you all, thank you for coming, and we'll see you in two weeks.